Good morning. I'd like to call the regular scheduled Board of Selectmen meeting for Tuesday, July 6, 2021, to order the first order of business. Excuse me, this is, this meeting is obviously being conducted in a hybrid fashion. We are live here together again, and it is being broadcast also via Zoom as has been authorized by the Connecticut State Legislature. So with that, first order of business, pledge allegiance, Charlie, you have the traditional dictates.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic which stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Joe. Item two is public hearing, and we had actually five items scheduled for a public hearing this morning. Take advantage of one hearing and that got a couple of ordinances, or a few ordinances. But we have withdrawn one, that's the one related to the noise ordinance. And that was done after consultation with staff. We socialized the changes on that noise ordinance, and they brought up some points that really require us to go back and take a look at it. The classic law of unintended consequences came into play. And so Town Council Barrett and myself will be back, add that, and we'll share that with you before we reschedule it. So, so we pulled that. Two dot one, and that's to amend, the first of the ordinances that we're looking to consider is to amend the Town of Guilford, Chapter 187-4 Historic District Commission. And that, that change came as a result of a request from the commission itself owing to the fact that they are having some difficulty getting members of the board largely because of the restriction that they have to own property within the district. So the changes you see here represent an opportunity for them to expand the potential pool of candidates to serve on the Historic District Committee. And so with that, I'll open it up to any questions or comments or concerns relative to those changes. Are there any amongst our board members? No, pretty straightforward, pretty straightforward.
So we're also removing the requirement, the possibility of owners who are not residents.
Pete, I know you're online, any comments or anything you want to add that I may have missed? Well, I thought Pete was online. Pete, not there. We may need to bring Pete in physically if we have any questions, but at this point, we'll, we'll hold off. Next one is to amend the Town of Guilford, Chapter 247 Taxation. And that one, that one, Joe, he's going to physically come join us, or is he? Okay, well, while we wait for Council Barrett to figure out the technology or make it, make his way from one office to this meeting room, we'll move on. The item 247 relative to taxation, this deals with the alternate energy systems exemption. And what we are doing here is, as part of our effort to, for sustainability initiatives, we have just recently received designation from the National Worship Organization called Soul Smart. Soul Smart is an organization that promotes the, the use of solar technology in residents and businesses, as a matter of fact. We were introduced to this organization through our council of governments who are sponsoring this initiative within our 15-member town, and I think we are the third member community to participate. You have to qualify by getting points, and one of those points is to actually promote it in your town code and ordinance. So our building department has been working with the Soul Smart representatives. We have modified our solar applications. We are going to be highlighting solar applications on the website. So it's, it's a methodology to promote throughout the community, the use of solar technologies. And this minor change, the addition you see here, which is the addition that would read, "The Town of Guilford finds it is in the public interest to encourage the use and development of solar energy systems as a clean renewable energy source, help promote local clean jobs." Any questions or comments about that? No. I see Pete has joined us, and big welcome, welcome here. One thing I, like, they, like, will do at the end, we will take questions from the public relative to all of these at the, at the end of, of the introduction of these, these initiatives. This, next is amendment code of the Town of Guilford, Chapter 31, and that's the Code of Ethics. This also is a change that had been requested by the commission, the Ethics Commission, as they went through a somewhat regular process of reviewing their, the ordinance and their operating procedures. So you can see that there's some language that's added in 31 dot one, reminding folks the actions of town officials affect every resident town, and the trust of the public and the integrity of its officials is essential, and it is the responsibility of each official to act in a manager, manner which promotes trust and confidence in such officials' actions and in the conduct of town business. So that's new to this, that's new to the section. And then also, they've added a new section called Appearance of Inpropriety. And that, owing to some gray area that sometimes manifests itself in the Ethics Commission's rulings for issues that are brought to them, they've asked that that be added, and that is that an official should avoid circumstances which would compromise the official's ability to make decisions solely in the public interest, or that could create an appearance of impropriety, even if not expressly prohibited under any other section of the code. Any comments or questions from the board members? Others relatively simple, I think. Pete, if there's anything you want to add to that, that, that should be added to it, feel free.
You know, that did come from the, the Board of Ethics. I know they spent some time thinking about it, and we went back and forth, so I know they gave it a lot of attention. And I think it, you know, one of their roles is to provide advisory opinions. And so this particular issue, the appearance of a conflict, even if not an actual conflict, is the type of thing that they would address by advisory opinion. So I actually think it's, it's a very good and fair addition to the existing code.
Thank you, Pete. Any, any questions, Pete? No? Okay. The next one, to amend the Town, the Code of the Town of Guilford, Chapter 131, Article Three, Wild Animals, and perhaps the reason for us having more members of the public in attendance at our meeting than we normally have. And there are a series of things that are, that have been modified with this, this ordinance. And I will try to highlight those. Section 131, five, feeding or sheltering certain animals prohibited. We have removed the line that says, and the removal is encouraged, added in unless, and then the provision of unless is that said person is licensed in a good standing with the Connecticut Department of Energy and Environmental Protection as a wildlife rehabilitator pursuant to Connecticut General Statutes 26-7 and 26-54, complies with all wildlife rehabilitator application and permit requirements is set forth by the Connecticut Department of Energy and Environmental Protection, and complies with all handling guidelines and disease prevention protocols developed by the State of Connecticut Rabies Advisory Committee. And said person's facility for wildlife rehabilitation and all rehabilitation efforts remain in compliance with Guilford zoning regulations, Connecticut Health Code, and the Town of Guilford Health Code. So the other substantial change, changes are, under 131-7, authority of the Health Director, we have removed the section that says, "The Director of Health for the Town of Guilford is hereby authorized to add additional species to this prohibition from time to time as such director deems necessary." And that language has been replaced with, "The Director of Health is authorized to enforce the provisions of this article and to issue warnings, citations, and fines as set forth in 131-8." Additionally, under penalties for offenses, we have added to the first line where it says, "Any person, we've added business entity that violates any provisions of this article shall be subject to citation and a fine issued by the Health Director, provided violator has been issued a written warning for such violation." And then additionally, we've added, "Any person issued a citation shall be entitled to a hearing to contest the citation. The Town hereby adopts the provisions of Connecticut General Statutes 7-152(c) for the establishment of a citation hearing process to contest citations issued pursuant to this section. The procedures for notice, hearing, disposition, and appeal and enforcement shall be as set forth in Connecticut General Statutes 7-152(c). Said procedures are in addition to those administered by the Connecticut Department of Public Health and provided under any other applicable municipal state or federal law or regulation." So just a couple of points that need to be made here. This, this recommendation, or this, this move to change the ordinance came about from a couple of perspectives. One was agreed by Town Council when the issue relative to the animal rescue facility came to light, and Town Council looked at the, the ordinance as currently constructed and immediately identified that there were some problems with the way it was constructed. Secondly, the, there was a recommendation, I think, or a discussion at a planning and zoning meeting relative to the ordinance and a cleanup of the ordinance was, was appropriate. So Pete, I'd like you to just weigh in a little bit on the rationale for changing the ordinance from the purely legal perspective.
Sure. I, I also want to point out, we have two attorneys present also, Joseph Mortalidi and Karen Kravitz of Sussman and Duffy. I have, as Matt knows, I've become associated of council with that firm, and they have helped me out in doing the deep dive on the statutes relating to this particular ordinance and the history. The history of this was, I believe, early 90s, this initial ordinance was developed to address a potential rabies scare at the time. And looking at it, when this came up, obviously, there's, there's been some discussion in the community about wildlife rehabilitation, and among the obvious zoning issues, the, this, a discussion of this ordinance also took place because it would appear to broadly, you know, legalize any type of feeding, harboring, or sheltering certain animals. So when we looked at it, it seemed very broad. And if you look at it closely, you see it, it prohibits feeding, harboring, or sheltering certain animals, which, which could occur not only at a somebody's home or business, but it could be from your car or in a public park or on the green or anything else. So it's, it's broad in that sense. And it, it also authorized the Director of Health, which is very unusual, to add species to the ordinance without any formal legislative review of what should be added. That, that actually presents due process issues in itself, that a law could be changed just by the statement or decision of a sole Director of Health. And I'll have to say, our Director of Health said, "I don't want that responsibility." So it had some issues that we wanted to correct there. With respect to the prohibition against feeding these animals at any particular site, that is clearly a land use issue. And it should not have been addressed this broadly, and I don't think that was the intent, by the way, to start creating land use regulations through a typical town code ordinance. So we pulled it back so that it would continue to address the potential rabies issues that will always be of concern, whether it's a crisis or not, excuse me. But it would also allow wildlife rehabilitation if it is otherwise compliant with our zoning and health regulations and blight regulations. So this does not authorize permission of wildlife rehabilitation in any particular zone, but what it does do is it, it eliminates a flat prohibition against that townwide. And the final thing I'll add is, the, the last section that Matt read, 131-8, that just formalizes our citation and hearing and appeal process. It's the same language we use for other ordinance as well. So we thought we'd specify what that exact process is. We have it for storm sewers, we have it for blight, solid waste and recycling, so a number of other ordinances.
Thank, thank you, Pete. And I think one of the, one of the things that needs to be said here, that there is some recognition that the work that Eustace Mann does has value, all right? Therefore, that's why the section was added, that if it could be done by a licensed individual by the state of Connecticut. I think there are some 15 such individuals around the state who are in fact licensed. So that's, that is recognition that there is a valuable service there. But what I, what, from my mind's eye, what this action is not doing is, this board is not taking a position relative to the applicability of that facility at that, at that location. That is clearly the purview of the Planning and Zoning Commission. Some members we have here, Chairman Johnson and, and member Sean Cosgrove, who are very interested in this. And quite honestly, in some conversations I've had with Chairman Phil Johnson, this is squarely putting it right back on planning and zoning, which is, as Pete just described, this is a land use issue, however, and the appropriateness of where and when to go. So I think one thing that needs to be clear, this is not an endorsement or a promotion or anything about the applicability of that facility relative to permitting and zoning regulations. One of, you know, and I, I'm assuming we all share the same comment on that. Consistent?
Yes.
All right. Certainly, questions?
Just wanted to see where our Director of Health stands on the ordinance as, with the proposed amendment.
I don't know if Sonia's on. But I can tell you this, we, we circulated this, and thank you for that question. We circulated this to our Director of Health, our zoning enforcement officer, the outside council we use for zoning, Chuck Andrus. I took a look at it, and of course, the attorneys from Sussman and Duffy. So we, we did get this out to everyone. I think George Crawl probably had a look at it, too.
Do you feel that she's generally supportive of it?
Yes.
Yeah, yes. And by, and by the way, that followed a meeting that we had, that, that group, except for George. The rest of us had a, a meeting in this, in the room you're in now, and had an extensive conversation about this.
And the results of that conversation were that they were generally supportive of this change in the ordinance?
Yes, yes.
Any other questions from board members?
No.
All right, Pete, anything else you think you need to add, or are we okay?
We're good.
I'm gonna, use a little discretion here, as we do have representatives of Planning and Zoning Commission. Do you have any specific questions or, or concerns that you'd like to relay?
No, I just, I'm here just to make sure that the board, because of the timing.
Right.
We have a meeting tomorrow, by changing the ordinance today presents an appearance of support for the ordinance and for the activities of Little Rascals. And I just wanted to make sure that the Board of Selectmen was neutral on that, so as to not place us in a difficult position.
I mean, my thoughts on that, you know, and we talked about it when we set this public hearing date, is whatever our personal feelings are about it, the, the point we're trying to make is that it is a land use issue. We wanted to have this ordinance in place, modified in place, so that, you know, the responsibility became a zoning issue here, the responsibility belongs as far as decisions of land use.
I agree. One of the comments I made to a reporter one day last week was that, for the record, the anticipated action on the ordinance does not represent an opinion of the Board of Selectmen related to the demand, appeal, and, and application for, for continued use of the property for that matter. So I, I think that, I'm, I'm, I'm confident in that. Relative to the timing failure, you're absolutely right. But Pete, if I'm not mistaken, ordinances go into effect 30 days after they are approved by the Board of Selectmen, is that correct?
That's right.
So the timing really doesn't, yeah, this, this will not be in effect until early August.
Yeah, actually, I should say upon publication, 30 days.
Okay. All right, with that, I am going to open up the questions, and we'll start with questions or comments from the public, and trace, if you would, you wouldn't mind being the, the driver on this, comments or questions from the public relative to the Historic District Commission ordinance change. I see we, I'm not sure, we have Randy, is that Randy? I do see Randy here, who's the chairman of the commission. Randy, did you want to make any comments or?
Yes, can you hear me?
Yes, I can.
Yes, I want to thank Peter for reviewing our, our Chapter 187-4. We had an inaccuracy in it, in that it had to be owners or residents, and the law actually states just residents. But we have been having trouble for a couple of years trying to get our commission up to strength of eight people, and I think the change that, that has been proposed will enable us to look outside the district and get somebody that would be a good fit for the district to get our numbers back to where they should be. So appreciate that, thank you.
Thank you. Any members of the public looking to make comment or, or ask a question on this issue? I don't see any hands up, the electronic use of the hand probably works. Cindy, would you interpret, would you interpret that for us? Anyway, okay, hearing none. Move on to taxation, which is an issue around Soul Smart and adding some language encouraging the, the populace to explore and implement the solar technologies. Anyone from the public wishing to make comment or ask a question on saying?
Can I be heard or seen, J.J. Murphy?
Yes.
Okay, I just, my, it's a question, is this for people who are employing solar technology in the future, or does this include those of us who already have solar technology?
This is encouraging folks to do something in the, in the future. You're already covered by the, the state statutes relative to the tax breaks that are there. This is just some language to satisfy the rating agency, Soul Smart, relative, it does not change the applicability going forward or retroactively.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Anyone else on, on this particular issue? No? Okay, let's move on to the Chapter 31 Code of Ethics. I see that Ethics Commissioner Ken Wilson is here. Ken, any comments you want to make on this?
No, I'd just like to say thank you to the board for entertaining this request, and I thought, I think Peter did an excellent job of outlining it. This has been a, it's been in the works for over a year. The commission felt it was time to, as you said, we try to regularly look at it, but it was time to look at wording that was missing, if you will, or bring this up to date as it reflects town officials and also the, the use of impropriety. So Peter did a great job of outlining that, and we appreciate your support.
Thank you, Ken. Any comments from the public or questions? Going once, going twice, three times. Thank you. Excuse me. Chapter 131, Article Three on the Wild Animals. Is there anyone wishing to make public comment or ask specific questions? If you're making comments, I would ask that you hold on to three minutes so that everyone can have the opportunity to, to participate. Is there anyone who wishes to speak to this issue? Raise your hand electronically or just wave your hand, and Tracy hopefully will identify you as you come in, in some kind of order. Alicia?
Yes, hi, thanks, Matt. This is Alicia Dolce at 301 Old Whitfield Street. Can everyone hear me?
Yes.
Yes.
Great. I do have questions and comments. Do you want me to, want it, how do you want to, do you want me to just ask a question and then, you know, hold back on comments, or how do you want this to flow?
Why don't you make your comment and then a question at the end, that probably works easier.
Okay. So I did, I, I sent a letter on Friday to the Board of Selectmen, and as, just as a, we, I was one of us, of seven of us who met with Matt prior to him going on vacation, just because we all live in close proximity to Little Rascals, and we just had questions about, again, the fact that this had been fast-tracked up in, in, prior to the planning and zoning hearing tomorrow. And, you know, Matt, I do appreciate you explaining some of the reasonings for, for these changes, but it still occurs to myself and other neighbors that this proposed ordinance change doesn't go far enough to address concerns. And one of them is, some of, one of them is sort of a nitty-gritty, and then some of them are more large-scale. So this is, this is sort of my question about the definition of waste materials to be properly stored. It seemed, or my question is that waste materials was just narrowly defined it, defined as waste food products and containers or garbage or other similar refuse attracted to animals. And without any doubt, that does need to be controlled because of its potential to attract rats and flies. I think the broader issue of animal waste was not addressed at all, which proposes, you know, the bigger public health risk, and also creates a foul stench and flies, and that's animal waste. I mean, we, we've had rats for three years, and we currently have a rat, a rat, you know, presence of rats in our backyard. So, you know, for us, or just this issue of how these wild animals and, and the, either the food and/or the waste would be handled, seems, seems like it's, it's touched on in the ordinance, but it doesn't really go far enough. The other issue is, and this kind of relates to that issue, it has to do with transferring responsibility of enforcement to the Health Department. As I read this, it sounds again that the Director of Health is authorized to enforce provisions of this article, which means to issue citations and warnings and fines. But what that's doing is not addressing the general issue of oversight just as for, as it is. So right now, there's this system of citizen watchdogs that has been, it's kind of the way, it's, the way that this has been, you know, set up so that if, if, if a neighbor has a problem or a concern, or the term can be complaint, that's the only thing that sets into motion an inspection of the facility. And, you know, I, I noticed the Town Council attorney saying earlier that the Director of Health doesn't want the responsibility, right, of, of designating which animal species should or should not be covered in this town ordinance. I can tell you that no one wants the responsibility of alerting the town that there, they have rats in their backyard, there's a foul stench, they have an abundance of flies. This is an incredibly awkward sit burden on neighbors and those of us who live in close proximity. And, you know, just, just that in and of itself, doing so exposes you to unbelievable character, you know, assassination, social media, town rally, there was a sign, there is now a sign, one foot from my town rally, there was a sign, there is now a sign, one foot from my property line. This has been just, it's just an unacceptable and an unreasonable burden. And it also, I wondered, like, what, what is the town's liability in this? I mean, I would think the town would be concerned about the presence of rats in a residential neighborhood. That's, that's a public health risk. So I just urge the commission to think about what is being perpetuated with these proposed changes. And, you know, the last thing I want to bring up is that I, I really don't feel that these proposed changes are setting up Eunice Demond to also succeed because clearly there's a need for her services. She is, you know, her sign says she's open twenty-four seven. I think she has a reputation for having a big heart. I can understand that people from outside of Guilford, animal control officers are dropping animals off. And I guess my question is, if the town really sees value in having this facility located in Guilford, I think a logical question is, what can the town do to support Eunice's ability to successfully, you know, rehab animals while also making sure there are no negative impacts on the neighbors and the people who walk by? This is a very heavily trafficked neighborhood. It's just people walk and ride their bikes by constantly, whether they're using the train or not. So it just doesn't seem that this is a sustainable model for the long run. That's going to likely foster the success of this operation and while making sure there's minimal impacts on residents and the neighborhood. Thank you.
Thank you, Alicia. I think I pulled three questions out of that. There may have been more. The first had to do with the animal waste itself and that the ordinance didn't go far enough on that. Pete, would you perhaps talk to the section one thirty-one dash five? Would that have more details specific to the waste materials? Is that, is a, is that in the Connecticut general statutes? Is that covered possibly in the statutes?
Not, excuse me, not that I'm aware of, particularly though one of my fellow attorneys, if they know, can, can jump in. But basically, that particular provision, we just left the way it was. That was the language in the initial ordinance. So when we, you know, when we went to modify, that's one of the things we left alone. I think it does say, I'm gonna have to take a quick peek here. Similar, it says, waste food products and containers, garbage or other similar refuse attracted to animals. You know, it's probably broad enough, but, but let me say this. The issues that were just raised by that resident are legitimate ones, but they're for the Planning and Zoning Commission, which would determine where, if anywhere, wildlife rehabilitation can occur. So this ordinance was modified just to get out of the way of potentially creating a conflict, not only whether it was to occur at Eunice's property or anywhere in town. So that was the point, or one of the main points of the modification.
Thank you, Pete. Let me go to the second question, which is enforcement. I think Alicia may have misspoken that the Health Director does not want to do the enforcement. The Health Director is willing to, is more than willing and looks forward to doing her job as described by the state statutes as well as by the town ordinances. And in terms of the enforcement provision, Alicia, my office is the resting place for town complaints. It's often the first place that someone comes to. And it is a significant number of things that take place relative to blight and those kind of things come to us through the, through the input from citizens. And that is traditionally the way we learn about so many of these. The Demond thing is a little bit different. There is, it's clearly been in existence for quite some time. And I do know that in two thousand nineteen and also in two thousand twenty, then Health Director Dennis Johnson had intervened on that facility. I don't know whether that was a direct result of a complaint or inquiry from the public, but Dennis did, did fulfill his duties relative to certain things that we found, he found in violation. And then the third one is what can the town do? I think Pete just talked to that. Basically, you know, planning and zoning has the ability to determine the applicability of that in, in certain residential zones. You know, I, at the sake of committing the songs, there is an animal rescue facility now on Long Hill Road. Song Strong organization, it's a horse rescue organization. So there are appropriate places to put things. And again, I'm going to go back to Pete's comment that squarely falls back on the shoulders of planning and zoning. Is there anyone else who wishes to make comment or ask a question?
I just raised my hand to ask if people, this is ad standard from the New Haven Register. When people make comments, if you would be so kind as to state your full name because the screen names aren't always revealing of who everyone is. Thank you.
Good point. Cindy, Cindy, you can be the first to do that. Name and address for the record, please. Cindy, we can't hear you. Still can't hear you. Cindy, we can't hear you.
Can you hear me now?
Yes, we can.
Okay, you can't see me, but you can hear me. Hold on. Well, I know you can't see me, but I'm going to give you all the information. My name is Cindy Vaporis, V A P O R I S. And I live in East Haven, Connecticut. Some of the selectman board members do know me. I'm here, I'm going to talk about some of the things that Alicia might have pointed out about the animal waste and the rats and things like that and the complaints. But first, I want to say thank you for changing the ordinance. I'm pretty happy with that. If that was in my town, I'd be okay with that. As you all know, I am an animal advocate. I do a lot of transporting for wildlife. I go to Eunice's pretty often. I'm there all times of the day. I've been there. I've not seen any rats, but I'm probably not there at the opportune time for those. Not seen any flies. I have not smelled anything. Not saying that these things haven't happened in the past, but they're not going to happen in the future. I compost and when I compost, sometimes I have a rat. I'm sure there's plenty of people, if it's a green neighborhood, that compost. And you also live near the water and there's a lot of rats by the water. And yes, they would be attracted. And if there's dead animals off the road, they're going to be attracted to those too. Eunice and Little Rascals is very important. And I understand that it is not for you guys to make this decision, that it is for planning and zoning, and I plan to be there too. The, the thing of saying that we can move this somewhere else, well, whose expense will that be at? Will that be at the neighbor's expense because they want it won? Where were the complaints the ten years prior before these folks moved in? I mean, it's, it's just not, I don't understand why these neighbors just did not go to the place and speak to the woman. This, this doesn't have to happen. Are we not all human beings? I mean, it's imperative that we have a vector rehabber here. These animals don't stay in the neighborhood. They don't stay there. They're teeny tiny little babies. There is some kind of way to solve this. And it shouldn't be all at someone else's expense. There, there's some, got to be some type of common ground and not have to drag everybody through the mud. So I'm hoping that, in fact, tomorrow at the planning and zoning, we can get this all pretty settled. And why can't we just have a mediator with these two neighbors and see if they can talk it out? I mean, why does it always have to go into this big, huge thing? They don't like rallies, they don't like, well, you know, that's kind of what happens when you do something like this. And for them to be, or her husband to be on the planning and zoning board, once this happened, he should have excused himself, whether he was asked to be on that committee or not. When this started, he should have excused himself because again, it's somebody else putting things in the lap of your selectmen and your, your boards. Okay, this should be a private, private thing.
Cindy, you exceeded the three minutes.
I know I have, and you know that I respect every single one of you folks there. And I hope that we can all get this taken care of at a very peaceful level. Have a great day, guys. Thank you, everyone.
But I just want to make one point of clarification. Bill Freeman, the commissioner, the commission member, has recused himself from this issue and he did so at the outset when it came to planning and zoning.
It shouldn't just be this issue.
Yes, that, that's the way it works in this case, Cindy.
Yeah, I know how it works there. Thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Anyone else who wishes to address the board in comments or questions?
I can't raise my hand. Just let me know, there are two people who've raised hands ahead of me. I can wait my turn, but I just can't raise my hand. I don't know how.
Okay, this is J.J. Murphy, who's on via phone. You have it. Give us your full name and address for the record, please.
Okay, I'm Judith J.J. Murphy. I live at seven six five Westlake Avenue in Guilford, Connecticut. I grew up in Guilford, graduated high school here in nineteen seventy, traveled the world, and now I've come back home. And a couple of points that Cindy raised were questions in my mind too. It seems that the Little Rascals has been there for a very, very long time, that land has always been a flood plain. And even growing up in Guilford, there were always rats in a flood plain. I'm kind of worried more about what happens if we do get a biblical flood. The property that was built a year and a half or two years ago, what was done before permits were granted to ensure that that property is itself in the right place? Again, I don't want to bring my nineteen fifties memories of Guilford into this conversation, but I am a little bit concerned that if we're going to subject one neighbor to intense scrutiny, that the other neighbor or neighbors who have chosen to build in a flood plain, and by the way, there's no sewer system here in Guilford, the whole septic issue, all of it is really kind of a possible accident waiting to happen. And I just, I care about my town and I care about what happens to all of us. So I'm going to see the rest of my time so other people can speak and I thank you.
Thank you very much, J.J. Anyone else wishing to address the board or ask a question?
I have my hand up.
Okay, name and address for the record, please.
Rick Sandella, sixty-two Tuttle's Point Road. I just want to speak for the animals for a second. And, and Matt, you know, while this does fall to another board to decide, we look to you guys at the selectman level to really shape this kind of policy. The issue is that we are losing habitat for animals on a daily basis here in Guilford, here in Connecticut, here around the globe. And there are going to be more and more animals who need Eunice's help. And when you mentioned that there are other rehabilitators in the state, they are so overworked, if you've ever called one, they haven't slept in hours. So they're really not the solution here. We really do need to, we really do need to find a way to protect and help all these injured animals that show up at Eunice's doorstep. And I hope you guys can see your way to that.
Thank you for the comment. Thank you, Rick. Anyone else wishing to address the board?
From Claus and Paul's Rehab Center, my name is Rose Morals and I am an RVS rehabber. We have less than a dozen active RVS rehabbers. Part of the problem is we have to take in all the expenses, formula, food, cages, enclosures, and including our rabies shots. The state does not provide this. With all this said, we also volunteer twenty-four seven. Now, I have heard from the community saying, well, why don't we provide a sanctuary, a shelter somewhere else? If we did that, who would cover the center's cost? The rent, the mortgage, the utilities, the twenty-four seven staffing? Because I don't think anyone would like to leave their house every two hours for animal feeding and cage cleanup or every four hours as they get a little bit older. Eunice does all this without any pay. Everything comes out of her pocket. And I just wanted the community to understand this. It's not easy just to move a wildlife rehab center like she has. And I am very thankful for all the changes you made today. I'm hoping that this will make an impact tomorrow. Thank you, Rose Morals.
Thank you very much, Rose. Is there anyone else who wishes to address the board? Is that Eunice waving her hand? Eunice, we can't hear you.
There we go.
There you go.
Good morning and thank you. Obviously, I've been doing this for a long time and unfortunately, it's come to this. I do appreciate your time and your energy that you've put into changing this ordinance. I was not aware of it until just recently. According to Alicia and Bill that there's rats on their property, I'm unaware of this. Right now, there's nothing in my pens. There's no food available for them. So if they're in their backyard, they're getting food somewhere. It's not from my facility and it's not coming from my property.
Okay.
Oh, go ahead.
No, I sounded like you were done. Have you finished?
I am, thank you.
Thank you, Eunice. Anyone else wishes to address the board?
Hi, my name is Dr. Nikki Korman.
Hi, Nikki, name and address for the record, please.
Dr. Nikki Korman, K O R M A N. My address is two five one four Boston Post Road, Suite eight C, Guilford. I'm a licensed marriage and family therapist.
Thank you, Rose.
I came by Eunice about three years ago when a baby squirrel was in my parking lot and one of my clients had mentioned that the squirrel was there. And at the end of the day, the squirrel was still there. I found the name of Eunice and I cannot believe the service she provided to this baby squirrel as well as since that time, I have become a volunteer, seeing what she does, what's expected of her, how inundated she is with numerous phone calls and trying to help all these critters and saving their lives. The reason I got on is because I have also sent clients of mine to help volunteer in aiding the care of the facility in terms of volunteering, cleaning and feeding. And it has been a service to the community in that I've take, I've had adolescents over at her facility. She's absolutely wonderful. She's very responsible, very dedicated and very knowledgeable. And I think it would really be a shame to take this service away from a family therapist's perspective, as it has been really helpful to some of my clients, dealing with their own anxiety and their depression. So I hope that, that, that the board makes the right changes. And again, this woman should be congratulated for the dedication that she has shown over the years. I'm just amazed that, I don't know that I would get up every two hours and every four hours feeding numerous babies. So, okay, thanks very much.
Nikki, thank you very much for your comments. One question a board, one of the board members had was, the address you gave us, was that a business or residential address? uh, the address you gave us, was that a business or residential address?
Um, it's a business. It's actually residential business. There's, uh, uh, residential condos in the front and commercial condos in the back.
Okay. And, and yours, is that your residence?
That's, no, it's my, uh, no, it's my business.
Your residential address for the record, please.
Uh, twenty Glenwood Road, Clinton, Connecticut, zero, six, four, one, three.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Uh, anyone else wishing to address the board?
Hi, Matt.
Oh, sorry. Go ahead, Steve.
Hi, Steve O'Connor. I live at two sixty-five Old Whitfield Street in Guilford. Um, there, there's been a number of statements and comments about how long the, the business has been in, i- i- in its present state or in its present location. We've been Guilford residents for over twenty years. We only recently moved to two sixty-five Old Whitfield Street. Uh, my wife and friends have been running down Whitfield Street for years. Uh, we had no idea what Little Rascals was. When we moved here, it was a very small, if it was ten by ten, that would be about the size that I would think. Um, and it, we, there's no information still on Google. If you search it, you get The Little Rascals movie, three or four pages of that. And so any, any reasonable person would stop searching. We had always assumed it was a playground for kids. We had no idea that it was a, an animal shelter, an animal rehab facility. So I think that a number of comments have been made, both in the public and in, in various meetings, that, well, when you bought that property, you should have known what it was. I don't think that's the case. It's not like moving toward the airport. We knew full well when we moved here that there would be train noise. We didn't ask anyone to move the train. We didn't ask anyone to do anything with the train. We are aware of the train. We had no idea what Little Rascals was. And the expansion of it from a small facility to a rather large facility is also what's at issue here. And, and I think you're right. That's a planning and zoning issue. That's a land use issue. And we look forward to discussions of planning and zoning tomorrow night. Thank you.
Thank you, Steve. Anyone else?
Um, hi, Matt. I just, this is Alicia Dolce. Again, I just very quickly wanted to, um, correct the record.
Alicia, no. Alicia, no, this is not a tit for tat. You've made your comments and you've asked your questions.
Okay, fair enough.
Anyone else wishing to address the board? Anyone else? Hearing none, I want to thank everyone for their participation in this, uh, this issue, this very sensitive issue. And I have the full trust that the Planning and Zoning Commission will weigh this in, in the deliberative fashion they are known for. Uh, and will, uh, will render a, a decision at some point, whether it's Wednesday night or if the, if it's extended beyond that, I don't know. So thank you once again for all your participation in the, in today's public hearing. Uh, for those who are, uh, don't have any emergency to do, the balance of the board's elected meeting will now take place. And item three, public forum. Anyone wishing to address on, uh, the board on any other items on the agenda? Hearing none, we'll move on to item four, uh, that's approved minutes, and the June first, twenty twenty-one regular meeting minutes. Is there a motion?
Don't move.
A second?
Second.
Any comments, questions, suggested changes or additions? Hearing none. Let me try your minds. Select inhabitant?
Hi.
Select woman runner? Uh, let's try it out?
But I, I'll excuse myself.
Exactly, exactly. So, uh, voice vote is fine. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Abstentions?
Abstain.
Thank you. Thanks for that reminder. Zoom, Zoom habits. That, that Zoom habits? All right, item five, Board of Ed Director in Operations, Facilities, Cliff Gurnum, uh, five dot one is to discuss and take possible action on the award of bid number fifteen dash twenty twenty-one, the A W Cox and Guilford Lakes HVAC upgrades phase two boilers and cooling tower. Uh, Cliff, good morning, and thanks for sitting through the public hearing.
Uh, great. Thanks for having me. Uh, so this project that recently we went out to bid is for the Guilford Lakes uh, boilers and cooling tower. And then in addition to that, it's also for the Cox boilers only. Um, so we had four bidders that responded to the invitation. Uh, we did a scope review with the lowest combined bidder. So, uh, that was controlled air. Uh, they gave us a combined price, which was about twelve thousand dollars less than any of the totals, so, um, which included the two alternates. We did the scope review. We had no issues with the scope, and we had no issues with the scheduling. Uh, they understand the work needs to be completed by October fifteenth is uh, what our date is to turn the heat on. So obviously, it's critical to have it done by that date, and they have no issue doing that. We had, uh, the engineering firm, um, as well as the Board of Ed, um, kind of review the contractor, and both of them have used controlled air in the past. They don't have any issues or concerns with the contractor themselves. So, uh, the Standing Building Committee reviewed the bids, the recommendations by the engineering firm, uh, and recommended awarding the bid to controlled air in the amount of one million, one hundred twenty-three thousand, four hundred dollars. This includes alternates one and two, uh, in the amount of one hundred twenty-nine thousand, nine hundred dollars for the replacement of the heat exchangers at both locations. So we're looking for that approval today.
Thank you, Cliff. Uh, just a quick question. October fifteenth is an aggressive date. Uh, we've heard that there are some projects that, uh, other projects that are being contemplated are actually going to approve by the board, where the dates are slipping out because of the, uh, the lack of availability of materials. Uh, are we concerned about that at all here?
Uh, we are not, because we did talk with the contractor regarding those issues. They feel that they can meet the, the deadline without a problem at this point. So, uh, we're pushing forward, obviously, to get your approval as fast as possible, so we can turn around and get everything on order. So we have it, uh, on time, so everything stays on schedule.
Great. Any other questions, sir? Hearing none. Is there a motion to award the bid, uh, for the Guilford, uh, the Cox and Guilford Lakes Boiler and Cooling Tower Replacement Project of Controlled Air Inc. from Bramford, Connecticut, for the total bid sum, the amount of one million, one hundred twenty-three thousand, four hundred dollars, which includes alternates number one and two, for one hundred twenty-nine thousand, nine hundred dollars?
We've heard, I, I'll move it. The funding is all separate.
Yeah, yeah. Ten seconds.
A second.
Yeah, and the funding is, uh, bond referendum. It was a, the most recent bond referendum, uh, fiscal year twenty twenty-one, which has an approximate balance of two million dollars. Any further questions or comments? Uh, call the question. Try my lines. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstentions, recuses, and motion carries. Uh, Cliff, uh, five dot two, consider take possible action reward of the A W Cox Doors and Locks Project.
Yeah, so we're continuing on to the district, replacing, uh, the door and locks, uh, and the hardware for the doors. Uh, this present project is to do a number of doors at the Cox Elementary School. Uh, this project is a little more complex, because we do have to replace a, a couple of window wall, uh, door wall configurations. Uh, so it's, it's going to be a little more challenging. So, uh, in, in this bid proposal that you see in front of you, we did request that the contractor, uh, do the installation, uh, of these doors, uh, because of the, uh, complexity of them, uh, which drove the price up a little bit. But, uh, the Standing Building Committee has reviewed the proposal by, uh, BMP, uh, contracting. They are the present contractor through the EZ IQC program, construction program. We've used that construction program numerous times in the past. As a matter of fact, uh, they have been the, uh, the process that we've been using for the past, uh, three or four, uh, replacement of the doors. So, uh, we're looking at, uh, awarding, uh, the project in the amount of eighty-seven thousand, five hundred, nine dollars, fifteen cents to BMP Construction, uh, out of Brookfield, Connecticut. Uh, the Standing Building Committee has reviewed this and made that recommendation to move it forward.
Cliff, thank you. Is there a motion to, and then we'll go to discussion.
A second.
A second. Uh, any comments or questions?
Cliff, how many more schools do we have left?
So primarily just Adams. Uh, I have not spoken with the Board of Ed regarding the high school. Uh, but Adams would be the last, uh, school on our present, uh, schedule to get done. So I would speculate that Adams we've done, uh, probably over the winter, uh, once we complete both Baldwin and Cox over the summer slash, uh, fall.
Is the balance in this funding, uh, is this before or after this project?
Uh, I believe it's before the, this project.
And that'd be enough for Adams in that Texas?
Yes, there should be.
I just wanted to, Cliff, I just wanted to, to mention that this is good use of our various consortiums that we participate with in terms of, uh, uh, materials acquisition or services acquisition. This, the EZ IQC is a program offered through the Capital Region Council of Governments. Uh, and as you said, we've, uh, we've taken advantage of this, the opportunity, uh, to buy off that consortium bid, so. Anything further? Let me try your minds. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstaining, recusing, hearing none, motion carries. Thank you very much, Cliff. Have a great day.
Thank you, you too. Take care.
Uh, item six, Board of Education, uh, and Business Manager, Linda Trudeau, six dot one is to consider and take possible action on a resolution related to the technology lease for the Board of Education. Good morning, Linda.
Good morning. Um, so like we've done multiple years, Board of Education is looking to do a, what I'm now calling a capital lease, because it's not just technology equipment anymore. Um, do a lease for five hundred thousand dollars to purchase four hundred and fifty thousand dollars of technology equipment, as well as, um, fifty thousand dollars for a facilities maintenance vehicle. The vehicles are well beyond their useful life. And as you know, the Board of Ed cannot enter into debt on our own, so we need your authorization, um, to do that. And I believe you have a copy of the resolution, as well as a copy of the, uh, list of items to be purchased out of this lease.
Any comments or questions?
Yeah, questions. Linda, what do you think for rates? We don't have the proposals yet. Um, for the budget, I estimated, I believe, around three percent. Um, they've been coming in much lower than that. You know, because I did this over seven, eight months ago for the estimate. I don't know what it's going to be. The proposals will be in on Friday. I'm hoping it should come in within the hundred and four thousand dollars I have budgeted for the payment annually.
So it's the hundred and four over and above the four ninety-seven? I guess that'll push us over the five.
No, the, um, the hundred and four is one payment. Um, the lease will be paid back over five years. So we borrow, uh, we purchased five hundred thousand dollars of equipment. We pay it back over five years, plus the interest. Is it a hundred, I have a hundred and four? Sorry, I have it right here. A hundred and forty, I'm sorry, I'm transposing numbers. Hundred and forty thousand dollars was budgeted for the first payment.
And as you said, Linda, every five years, a year's worth of payments ages off, uh, and we replace it with the, uh, the, the next five-year cycle.
Right.
Thank you. All right, um, is there a motion to approve?
Don't move. Second.
Any further comments or questions? Let me try your minds. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstaining, recusing, hearing none, motion carries. Linda, thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Have a great day, everybody.
You too. All right, item seven, Facilities Engineer, Steve Nyedorf, uh, seven dot one. This is discuss and take possible action to contract with Air Dynamics for preventive maintenance for HVAC equipment for town buildings for fiscal year twenty-one, twenty-two. Steve, good morning.
Good morning, everybody. Um, we went out to bid, Facilities Department went out for quotes for, uh, HVAC maintenance, just like Matt had said. Four companies responded. Air Dynamics was the lowest, which right now, they're the ones that currently have been holding that contract for the past three years. So I am recommending entering into a contract with them for the amount of twelve thousand, two hundred and eighty-five dollars.
Thank you, Steve. Uh, is, uh, is there a motion?
I'll move it.
Discussion.
A second.
A second. Charles?
I, I'm assuming that they've been doing it for, uh, three years, and you're recommending it, that we haven't had any issues to speak of?
Not at all. Everybody's happy with their, uh, their work.
Anything further, Steve? Let me try your minds. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstaining, recusing, hearing none, motion carries. Steve, seven dot two, uh, consider take possible action to contract with County Septic Services LLC for septic tank pumping and disposal for town buildings for fiscal year twenty-one, twenty-two.
Again, the Facilities Department and Board of Ed went out for the septic pumping, uh, bid. And, uh, only two bidders, um, responded, the lowest being, um, Country Septic Services out of North Haven. So, uh, I am recommending we go with them for the amount of twenty-nine thousand, five hundred and forty-one dollars.
Uh, is there a motion for Sid?
Don't move.
A second. Comments or questions, Steve? I did have one. Uh, we're moving on from San, A W sanitation. Uh, are there any concerns, uh, at all that, uh, County Septic is not local?
Um, there aren't. It would have been nice to go with the local guy, but there's only, uh, so much you can do. So, uh, I did a background check. I've checked where they dump and stuff, and everybody's happy with them. I have heard nothing negative at all. So I have no reason to not recommend them.
Okay, and this is for a one-year, uh, one-year term?
One year with four possible, uh, renewals.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions or comments? Let me try your minds. All in favor? Opposed, abstaining, recusing, hearing none, motion carries. Steve, thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Have a good day.
You too. Uh, item eight, Deputy Police Chief Chris Massey, eight dot one, consider take possible action on the award of bid number seventeen dash twenty twenty-one, Maintenance and Cleaning Services for the Police Headquarters and Animal Shelter. Good morning, Deputy Chief. How are you?
Good morning. How are you?
Great, thank you.
So we, uh, we received four bids for the cleaning service, um, two of which we considered, um, as they were on the lower end of the bids. There was one that came in at twenty-seven thousand, um, but they're based out of Middletown, New York. Um, and then our current, uh, company that we use right now, Performance Environmental, uh, came in at three thousand and ninety-two dollars higher than that low bid, um, for Middletown, New York. But our preference would be to go with them. So it was a difference of cost between twenty-seven thousand to thirty thousand, ninety-two dollars on between those two. Um, and again, our preference is to stick with Performance Environmental. We've already vetted their personnel. We do background checks. Um, we're happy with the service they provide. Uh, they're very quick to get here. Uh, we have a phone number. We can get a supervisor here, generally within a very short period of time if we need it. Um, particularly if we have a issue where we have to clean a patrol car and get it back in service, or the cell block, anything of that nature. Um, so, and there's also coverage that, uh, for instance, this week, we have, uh, the cleaning person is actually out for the week, so they actually have coverage that's able to come in locally, um, to still address, uh, the building and meet our needs, so.
All right, thank you, Chris. Uh, is there a motion?
Make motion.
Motion. A second. Second. Uh, comments or questions?
I have one question. It, it's curious, the low bidder also, they also provide an hourly rate for the emergency work, and the low bidder on the contract has a much higher hourly rate for the emergency work than the higher bidders do. So I guess my question is, is there a lot of emergency work that we need?
Um, it, it happens infrequently, um, but certainly if, you know, we, we have a car that needs to be cleaned, um, particularly during the pandemic, if we had somebody in the vehicle that could have potentially, um, had COVID, um, certainly it's nice to be able to call and get somebody in that can clean that vehicle and get it sanitized, so that we can get it back in service.
Thank you, Chris. Any further, any other questions? Um, hearing none, uh, let me try your minds. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, abstentions, recusing, hearing none, motion carries. Thank you, Deputy Chief.
Thank you.
Uh, item nine, discuss and take possible action on ordinances as a result of the, uh, earlier public hearing. Um, and let's take them in the same order that we, uh, reviewed them. Uh, is there a motion to approve the amendments to chapter one eighty-seven dash four Historic District Commission?
I'm moving.
Second.
Any? Any further comments or questions? Hearing none. Let me try your minds. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, abstaining, recusals, hearing none. That carries. Chapter two forty-seven taxation, is there a motion?
No motion.
Second.
And a second. Any further comments or questions? Let me try your minds. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstaining, recusals, hearing none, motion carries. Okay. Chapter thirty-one, Code of Ethics, is there a motion?
No motion.
And a second?
Second.
Second. Any further comments or questions? Hearing none. Let me try your minds. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstaining, recusals, hearing none, motion carries. Chapter one thirty-one, Article three, Wild Animals, is there a motion?
No motion.
Is that a second? Any further questions, comments or questions?
No comments or comments? I, based on the public comment and the correspondence we received, I think it's really important to remind everyone that we are not voting for or against Eunice and Little Rascals. This is a law and we have to remember that it would apply to anybody. I mean, any of us could have a person move in next door. These laws would apply to that person too. So I just want to make that comment to start out. And then as far as my personal feeling about the change in the ordinance and how I plan to vote, this is, it's an example of taking away someone's right to do whatever they want on their own private property for the sake of public safety. And, you know, rabies continues to be a threat as far as I know. And we should have that restriction. But in a situation where there is a credentialing and licensing process that exists at the state level, it seems completely sensible to me to, I mean, I shouldn't be taking in baby animals, but a person with the proper training and credentialing should be able to do it. It doesn't pose the same public safety risk. And especially knowing that our Director of Health feels the same way, I'm strongly in favor of supporting this change.
Thank you, Susan. Charles?
I guess I'll comment also, again, to Susan's and our points made in the public hearing that is, the changes we are making, you know, really spells out that this is a land right issue. Somebody's heart, as far as taking care of animals, you know, it's not the discussion here. The discussion is whether or not it is done in a proper and professional way. That's what we're trying to, unfortunately, regulate. Everybody has good intentions, but, you know, we do have responsibility, all the dice bears, and that's what we're trying to do.
I just basically second Charles and Susan's comments and the difference between what we're doing here today versus the responsibilities that will come before the decisions that will come before the planning and zoning.
And I'll reiterate the point I made earlier and I think this makes, that this is not a reflection or endorsement of the specific application that we're, that is currently top of mind throughout. I also just want to take the opportunity to publicly thank the Planning and Zoning Commission for the work they do. That is, I think, one of the most difficult boards to participate on because you have to tell people no more often than you would probably like to tell them. But you are upholding our zoning code. So to both of you gentlemen here and the balance of the board, thank you for the work you do for our community. So with that, let me try your minds. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstaining, recusals, hearing none, motion carries. Item ten, appointments and resignations. Ten dot one, act on resignation received from Dennis Dasha from the zoning board of appeals with regret and appreciation. I'd like to make that motion.
I'll second it.
Second. Try your minds. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstaining, recusals, hearing none, motion carries. Item two, act on resignation received from Edward Movera from the Guilford Lakes Well Course Commission, also with regrets and appreciation. Is there a motion?
No motion.
Second. Try your minds. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstaining, recusals, hearing none, motion carries. Ten dot three, act on a recommendation to reappoint Mike Mickelley to the Board of Police Commissioners for term to expire June thirtieth, 2025. I want to make that motion.
I'll agree with you.
I'll second it.
Second. God bless you. Let me try your minds. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstaining, recusals, hearing none, motion carries. Ten dot four, act on a recommendation to reappoint Paul Cello to the Board of Police Commissioners for a term to expire June thirtieth, 2025. I want to make that motion.
I'll make that motion.
Second. Second. Let me try your minds. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstaining, recusals, hearing none, motion carries. Item, ten dot five, act on a recommendation to appoint Gloria Gidding to the Human Rights Commission to fill a vacancy for a term to expire June thirtieth, 2023. Is there a motion?
No motion.
Second.
Second.
Any further discussions? Let me try your minds. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstaining, recusals, hearing none, motion carries. Item eleven, request for use of town property. Eleven dot one, act on request from North Guilford Congregational Church to place a sign on the green advertising its church fair taking place August twenty-one, 2021. Just another sign of things returning to normal, that these events are starting to happen. Is there a motion?
No motion.
Second.
Let me try your minds. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstaining, recusals, hearing none, motion carries. Item twelve, committee reports. Anything on affordable housing?
Yeah. To follow up on one of the Guilford citizen, Chris Widmer, who came to talk about a possible ordinance regarding the way that the restricted housing, affordable workforce housing is handled through taxation. George Kroll and I met with him and we're going to, I think it's going to fall in the hands perhaps with you, Peter. I don't know if George has discussed it with you, but I will be happy to soon. And we are having a meeting of the General Committee, the Housing for Economic Development Plan Committee on this Thursday at five o'clock in this room. As always, the public is invited to attend. And we will be getting an update on the Woodruff Housing, Workforce Housing Project. And so hopefully I'll have a little bit more to tell you at our next meeting.
Also, I'd like to thank the City of London for moving on the Woodruff property, approving the subdivision, which is actually going to allow this to happen. So that was one, that was a couple of meetings ago, right? They all run together.
I think it was about two weeks ago.
You can watch it.
All right, any correspondence? Old business? New business? Public forum, limited to three minutes on any issue. Anyone in the public wishing to address the board? Nothing Tracy? You don't see anything? Good. With that, I would entertain a motion to adjourn. So, second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
That motion is not to be able, closed, I think. Thank you very much. Trace, we're done? So recording's done?
That actually works great with this information. Yeah, yeah. We can hear everybody very well and they seem to be able to hear us. Yep.
Yeah, that.
So recording.
I like having the screen there rather than.
Just start recording here.